Good evening, and I'd like to call the Goche City Council meeting to order tonight, Tuesday, January 17, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. Please silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices. The prayer will be by our Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be by Councilman at large, Adam College. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we bow before you tonight, we give you honor, we give you praise. We thank you for our blessed God. We ask that you continue to keep your hedge of protection around us, God. We ask for wisdom, God, tonight in this meeting, and unity as we conduct city business. And, Lord, we most of all thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ, and his sacrifice for us on the cross, and we ask all of this in his name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman College, and thank you, Mr. Ankerson. That brings us to Agenda Order of Approval. Do we have any changes? Ms. Shampsy?
Yes, sir.
A minute, are we gonna announce that?
She reposted the agenda, so it's not.
Okay, so, okay. Do we have a motion to approve the Agenda Order of Approval? So, motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Jackson. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Who do we have on the phone? Ms. Shampsy, do you know? Is anybody on the phone? That brings us to our announcements by our City Manager, Ms. Shampsy.
The Goche Men's Club Annual Monte Grill Parade will be held February 11, 2023, at 7 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Shampsy. That brings us to our presentation Agenda. The Goche School Choice Proclamation. Is anybody here to receive the proclamation? Do y'all have the proclamation for me? Ms. Montgomery? Miss? City of Goche Proclamation. A proclamation commemorating Goche School Choice Week, whereas the City of Goche recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Goche to be successful adults. And whereas our area is home to multitude of excellent education options from which parents can choose for their children. And whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrance of our community. And whereas the City of Goche has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children. And whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now, therefore, we, Mayor Casey Vaughn, and Council of the City of Goche, do hereby recognize January 22 through January 28, 2023, as Goche School Choice Week in the City of Goche, Mississippi. And all this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Mayor Casey Vaughn, City of Goche, Mississippi. And we're blessed in Goche to have not only public schools, but private schools. We have a wonderful superintendent in both of the systems, and we also have wonderful principals, counselors, nurses, everything down to the custodial staff does a phenomenal job in our school district. We are in Goche ranked and made history with our football team. Our band has been succeeding, and so has our other sports. So I encourage you to support all of our educational efforts here in Goche. That brings us to our business Agenda. Business Agenda Item Number One, Consider a Request for a 21-foot variance to secondary front yard setback requirements for an accessory building and a 1,211 and 1 and 1/2 square foot variance to total lot coverage in a R1 low-density, single-family residential zoning district located at 1600 Pat Drive, Goche, Mississippi, GPC number 23-01-VA, or by our Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant for tonight here is a request from Augustus L. Stamper for a 21-foot variance to secondary front yard setbacks, a 1,211 and 1/2 square foot variance to total lot coverage. The applicant will pay at 175, will pay on December 8, 2022, and all public maintenance requirements have been met. So some background on this request. The applicant would like to construct this addition to his existing detached garage. He would also like to add a carport over a portion of his existing driveway. The carport addition would be approximately four foot from the secondary front yard property line. So what a secondary front yard property line is, is a wimpy side property line if you weren't a corner lot. Because this is a corner lot, you have a front yard, which is the way your house faces, and you have a secondary front yard, which is the side yard adjacent to the street. So the secondary front yard requirements in our own district are 25 feet. The applicant would need a 21-foot variance to the setback requirements for the carport addition. And so we're looking at a lot of numbers here in this memo, talking about what the ordinance allows for total lot coverage. He wants to put these additions off his existing, and he would put in over the 25% allotted for total lot coverage, that includes house and all accessory structures. So in order for him to do what he's requesting, he would need that variance he's asking for for the 1,211 and 5 foot square feet, and also the 21-foot setback reduction to that secondary front yard. I've included the addition of variance in the process that the ordinance calls out, and also this case we talked about planning commission, and planning commission after hearing the case, considering it recommends approval request of the changes, they recommend approval of an 11-foot variance to the required setback to the secondary front yard, and 851 and 1/2 foot square foot variance to the lot coverage maximum. The applicants here tonight can talk about what he and planning commission discussed as far, and I think he was agreeable to that, but I'll let him talk about that, too. So, planning commission, or, sorry, council may approve the variance request presented to approve the variance request to change, but not the variance request. I've included the entire packet, before I can ask you to review if you have any questions for me. I can answer.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Do we have any public comments on Business Agenda Item Number One only? Any public comments? Do we have a motion by council to consider the request for 21-foot variance to the secondary front yard setback requirements for an accessory building and a 1,211 and 1 and 1/2 square foot variance to a total lot coverage in a R1 low-density, single-family residential zoning district located at 1600 Pat Drive, Goche, Mississippi, GPC number 23-01-VA, or Got a motion by Councilman Gilat. Do we have a second?
Just one clarification, Mayor. Is that? Are you moving to approve the planning commission's recommendation or the application?
What I'm doing is making a motion to open this for discussion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman College, seconds. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Albin?
I have no discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Yes, I do have a couple of questions. Based on planning commission's recommendation, by reducing the variance, lot setback variance to, I guess, 11 feet, 11 feet from the street. The square footage overage, is that based on the carport, or is that additional structure on there?
I believe he had agreed to reduce the size of the carport, but I was letting him explain.
Yeah. Meeting of council, Augustus Stamper, 1600 Pat Drive. The planning commission and I discussed it, and originally were asking to be able, because just to give you perspective, how our property line runs 11 feet onto into our yard from the curb. I was asking to be able to build four foot inside the yard from that line. After discussion with the planning commission, we agreed to start the carport at 14 foot from the property line.
Okay, property line, yes.
Which would give us still enough room to park one car without a good coverage in my driveways, four cars wide, so we were more than happy to agree to that.
Then let's see, is there a? Little carport addition, detached garage. So that's the only structure you're putting on, is that carport, or is there?
No, sir. The people are adding on to our existing detached garage.
Detached garage?
12 by 36 foot. 12 by 36, I can't figure out that. Yeah, add on 12 by 36 to our existing detached garage, and then a carport in front of that.
Gotcha, okay. I just, I know we heard a similar case last year with a gentleman that wanted to add on to the back of the house, and there were some options as far as trying to attach his touch structure to the primary structure, and he ended up withdrawing it, because it didn't look like it was gonna go that route. But, okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Gilat?
Mr. Stamper. Now, addition you're gonna add on to the existing garage, which is gonna be how far from the property line between you and Ms. Ingram?
Okay. There, between myself and Ms. Ingram, we already have a existing exposed driveway that was previously used for RV parking. All we're doing is basically enclosing that portion of the driveway. We won't encroach on Ms. Ingram any further than that driveway already does.
Is she aware that you're gonna be putting an additional shed up there?
I never had a direct conversation with her, no, but I never see her to speak with her. I work nights and sleep days.
You say you're gonna be parking seven cars there. Are you running a business out of your house?
No, sir. Just a lot of.
Are you a car collector?
I apparently have become one, yes.
You have what?
I apparently become a car collector, yes, sir.
So you have seven cars that you're gonna put within this carport or on your driveway?
No, sir. I have, I'm planning to park four inside. I have, I can currently park two inside the garage. With the addition, I'll be able to park two additional vehicles.
And then you?
And then, of course, I have tools and equipment that I have currently in storage that I'd like to bring home, which would accommodate that additional, the additional in the garage.
Well, I'm confused about when I say you're gonna add on, and then you're gonna add tools and equipment, I'm just wondering if you're running a business out of yours.
No, sir. I just, throughout my lifetime, I've worked on cars for a good portion of that life, and I just don't have the heart to let go of anything.
Has anybody complained about the amount of lights you got running around your house? You've lit up the whole neighborhood.
Like Rankin County Correctional, yes, sir.
At what?
Like Rankin County Correctional. Yes, sir, I did.
Yeah, well, that's all I have, but it just seems like, you know, we gave you approval to cut down a magnolia tree?
Yes, sir, and I'm correct.
In an oak tree?
Yes, sir.
And then you went in there and trimmed all the ones on the corner. You busted some big limbs out of those, which I think was not in accordance with the UDO. I haven't, I asked the planning commission director to go by there and look at it, and I don't know if they ever did, where you cut them big limbs off of that one oak tree there on the corner.
It was my understanding that if I trimmed the tree back, I wanted to trim it away from the driveway, which was my intention.
You whacked some pretty big limbs off of it, and then you lit up your neighborhood. That's all I got to say.
Is that what you're talking about?
No, that ain't it. That's not. Keep going this way.
Okay.
Look at that one, I did way whacked it off.
Okay, I got you. I got it, I'm on Google, that's why.
I'm done.
Thank you, Councilman Gilat. Councilman Jackson?
Yes, so, what is the, like, if you add on, because it looked like you're gonna add on over this driveway, and you're gonna pretty much close up, close in this driveway right here? Like, here where this garbage can is? Let me check.
Right, he's gonna put a shed there.
On a shed?
And add a carport coming out.
Right.
How far from the existing building is that gonna be, coming out?
From the carport?
Yeah.
It'll be approximately 20 feet from the existing garage.
From the roof?
Detached garage, approximately 20 feet.
Yeah, and go all the way across this area, plus all of this, from there to his new addition, right?
Yes, sir. All the way across the driveway, yes, sir.
So it's not gonna, it's not gonna go to this fence, where this fence is?
No, it's gonna stop to go over to where that?
Into that corner, that slab.
All right, so we're not, we are proving that he was able to, like, for us, he's got the footage he needs from the house to house, am I correct? He's got the proper needs.
Councilman, the rear setback apartment is five feet for accessory structures, so it would have to be five foot from this property line with the addition.
And he got that, he pretty much got that, am I correct?
Yes, sir. He's not asking for a rear, so I assume, I hope.
Okay, got it.
He's positive.
Okay, I just wanna, since he mentioned the neighbors, I just want any issue there.
Councilman Jackson, here's where.
He's got it.
Yeah, I got the back's picture, back's picture.
Explain it to him, I want a picture.
All right, okay.
Okay, I have no other questions, I was just making sure, make nobody mad.
Councilman George?
I think I've covered it all.
Thank you.
I do have one follow-up question.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
What's the required, Mr. Ankerson, what's the required notification for this type of application? Is it just adjoining, just adjoining property owners?
Okay.
Which means it's just Ms. Ingram, right? And the house behind it?
Yep.
Okay, both of them, and neither one of them said anything about it.
We had no calls or letters, and nobody attended, opposition to the planning commission.
This is all gonna be a flat aluminum carport?
Carport will be a purple style carport, basically just a roof and holes supporting the roof.
Be a flat?
It'll be a drop, a drop style, where the height would begin at the attached garage and drop to the street approximately four inches.
Four inches, okay.
Yes, just for water runoff.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, before we vote, I just wanted to get a clarification, we have a?
Right, I'm gonna bring that up. I read what was on the agenda, but the planning commission's recommending something else. So are we gonna change the motion to reflect the planning commission, or are we leaving it as the original motion?
I make a motion that we accept. Amend, well, I'll open for discussion, but I'll amend that discussion that we accept the planning commission recommendations.
Councilman Gilat has made a motion to accept the planning commission's recommendations to amend this motion, that would be change it to 11-foot variance to secondary front yard setback, and a 851.5 square foot variance to total lot coverage. Do we have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Have a second by Councilman George. Any discussions on the amendment? All in favor? Motion carries. Now we have to vote on the, are you, you abstained?
No.
Are you voting against?
Yeah.
Okay. One opposed. Then we have the original motion, we had a motion by Councilman Gilat, a second by Councilman College, all in favor.
This is the original motion, which has been amended to approve what planning commission approved, so it's been amended, so now what we're, which we're voting on is whether or not to approve what planning commission recommended.
Okay. All in favor?
We all should be doing this one.
No, this is, we already voted on the amendment. This is the original motion that has the old 21-foot variance.
This is as amended.
This is as amended.
With the amendment.
To approve his motion to amend his original motion.
Right. Are y'all, okay, so all in favor?
This is the motion with the amendment?
Yes.
So yes, I'm in favor, following the planning commission.
Okay. Who's opposed?
No.
And what about you, Councilman?
I'm opposed.
So two opposed. Ms. Dickerson, you got that? Okay, so we have, we had the original motion by Councilman Gilat.
It lost me.
The second by Councilman George, College. That was Vaughn, George, Jackson, Anderson, and Albin in favor, Gilat and College against. The amendment was by Councilman George, a second by, I mean, the amendment by Gilat, second by George, and?
Adam opposed.
Adam opposed, and Gilat was in favor. Now, we're going on to the next.
Confused.
Business Agenda Number Two, Resolution Directing the Placement of Leans on Properties Located in Goche, Mississippi for Fees and Charges incurred by the City of Goche to abate the unsafe conditions of vacant structures pursuant to the Mississippi Code, Section 21-19-11, by Mr. Scott Ankerson, our Planner.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this might be a little confusing. We're requesting that council approve the abatement, the work has been performed at 3,011 roads, the costs associated with the previous work, y'all approved for cleaning. This is the tire mess, as y'all know, with tires all being moved, and this is just y'all's approval to allow us to put it as a payment on the property.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Do we have any public comments on Business Agenda Item Number Two? Any public comments? None? Do we have a motion by council to approve the resolution directing the placement of leans on properties located in Goche for fees and charges incurred by the City of Goche to abate the unsafe conditions of vacant structures?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Albin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No discussion.
Councilman Gilat?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
I just wanna thank you and your department, Mr. Ankerson, and code enforcement, all of you, for your diligence in trying to clean up our city, because it is a selling tool. The cleaner and fresher we look, it does attract development. If it's got belided property next to it, it won't sell, and the people will go right on to a sister city, and we don't want that happening. So thank y'all again. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Anderson, all in favor? Motion carries. Ms. Dickerson. Business Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of the Docket of Claims. They have been submitted to us digitally, also they've been on the city website for the general public by our city clerk, Ms. Montgomery, and our deputy clerk, Ms. Dickerson. So do we have a motion to approve the docket of claim? Any public comments on the docket of claims? No public comments. Do we have a motion to approve the docket of claims?
Make a motion to approve the docket of claims by that all entries are on a true, correctly entered, and not fraudulent.
Do we have a motion by Councilman College? We have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Albin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman George?
No comment.
All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our consent Agenda Item Number, we approve all of them in one motion, unless somebody wants to pull one. That's one, approval of minutes from the regular council meeting held January 3, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. Two, received November and December 2022 privilege license report. Three, approval of water and sewer adjustments of January 2023 in the amount of $16,873.27. Four, authorization to remove office equipment and furniture from the City of Goche's inventory. Five, resolution approving the sponsorship of the Goche Men's Club Annual Monte Grill Parade to be held on Saturday, February 11, 2023, at 7 p.m. Six, resolution approving closure of roads and traffic control measures as described in the special event permit application submitted by the Goche Men's Club for their annual Monte Grill Parade on February 11, 2023. Seven, approval of a letter of support for Mississippi Songwriters Alliance's legislative funding request. Eight, approval of change order number one to increase the contract days with JLB contractors for the Goche Van Cleve Road wastewater sewer upgrades, Go Mesa. Does anybody wanna pull one? I just wanna pull only because the members are here and we should recognize them. I would like to pull number five. So do we have a motion to approve one through four and six through eight?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second? Second by Councilman Anderson, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to consent Agenda Item Number Five. I just felt like we should pull it so we could recognize the men's club here that are here this evening. We have Mr. Bob White, the president, we have Mr. Bill Watley, who is a past president, probably every board member he's been with the men's club. But y'all do a great job giving back to the community and partnering with us, and we wanna thank y'all for continuing to invest and host the Monte Grill Parade. And if Samuel could hold up the nice flyer, we've only had a nice flyer about many years ago, so this is great to compete with that flyer that y'all had that year to promote that we have a wonderful small-town parade, night parade here in Goche, Mississippi, and we wanna encourage everybody. The city's here to assist y'all if we can, and we will have our small block party like we had last year down on the city things, where we will have some live music with the sponsor, when the sponsor comes forward, we will make that announcement, along with food trucks, et cetera, to partner with you all to get attendees to the parade, have them to come tailgate. So we are gonna partner with you all again and host more activities down there to promote our beautiful city. So we thank you all for that. Does anybody else wanna say anything to the men's club?
We look forward to the parade.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen.
So do we have a motion to approve the resolution, the sponsorship of the Goche Men's Club Annual Monte Grill Parade to be held on February 11, 2023, at 7 p.m.?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Anderson?
Second.
Second by Councilman Albin, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our study Agenda. Number one is discuss citizen comments. You can come to our podium right here, state your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak. No citizen comments? Okay. That brings us to our council comments. It's the second meeting of the month, so we will start with Councilman Albin. we will start with Councilman Alvin.
Yes, uh, Councilman Jackson brought up the issues of speed bumps last meeting. Do we even have portable speed bumps that we can put out in areas that have high volume of calls for reckless drivers or careless or high volume complaints for spirit?
We have the, I have matters to come.
So what would be the process if a, a community wanted to request those? Would they have to get a, uh, approval?
Really, submit that request to Ramona. Um, like I said, we only have, I think, two. And we were also, can I have one more question?
That's weird.
We also have put down these, what do they call those, stomp strips?
Yeah, recently we had that child hit up there in Hickory Hills area waiting for a school bus, and, uh, got an influx of phone calls in reference to speed bumps and traffic control. I was, I didn't know what to tell them as far as requesting that type of equipment from the city.
Well, the last time, just the, last time we put some temporary speed bumps when they were doing, when they were doing the bridge up there, uh, we actually did council approval to, uh, approve putting in the speed bumps on those, uh, secondary streets that were used as a detour while that bridge was under construction, uh, which was short-lived because while the first week everybody loved the speed bumps, then by the second week, everybody that has a lowrider or lived on the street, people were tearing in between the two speed bumps and so forth. So while initially for a week they were very much appreciated, thereafter I got nothing but complaints, but I'm more welcome to give it another try.
Well, yeah, in light of what just happened, we've had an increase for requests for that type of tool.
I think, Ms. Shancy, can you get Chief Bevers to give an update on that incident? Because there's two sides to every story.
Um, he can email us that, Ms. Shancy, if you don't mind.
Thanks to all the employees of the city. We couldn't do it without you, Clearwater, Waste Pro. Thanks for all you do. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Alvin. Councilman Anderson?
I'd like to thank Clearwater Solutions for cleaning the sidewalk on the Gochae Van Cleve Road, which was being encroached by the, the hill of dirt and the land to, to the east side of it. They come along there and cleaned it and got it real nice. Now you can ride your bike or wheelchairs or whatever without running off into the road yourself because the sidewalk is attached right directly to the side of the road. But thank y'all for getting that cleaned, Russell. Appreciate it. Uh, another thing I wanted to bring up was, um, I talked with Scott, Plenary Director, earlier about the diuretic car wash on Lander Road next to our $3 million park that we've just upgraded. I say $3 million because it's probably worth that now after we put 2.1 or 2 into it. Uh, but there's a car wash there that's been unused and it's, it's been nothing but trouble for I know 20-plus years. And it, it's, I stopped there today and looked at that and yesterday, and it's just pitiful looking next to our new park. It just drags down the whole appearance of the Lander Road area. I've asked Scott, let's take a look and see what it's going to take. Let's get that thing done away. We have tore down or whatever. It, it's really pitiful looking. I know, I, I, it seemed like it's been there 20-plus years unused, other than people doing drugs and fighting and different things going on there at that corner.
We tried to reach out, Councilman Anderson, to the owner to see if they were willing to donate it to the city for extra parking for Baycott Park. So maybe we will, um, hear back from them also on that request.
Okay, whatever it takes.
Yeah. Because the parking is, if you've been down there, like at opening ceremonies, Chastity, um, everybody that was down there, um, people were literally parking on side of the road. Um, fire trucks couldn't get down, um, Webb Road if they had to get out of there. It was so many people utilizing that.
That'd be a good idea. Serve a lot more purpose than what it's looking at like right now.
It would be a major benefit. Same thing with that, um, belighted, um, laundry net. That piece of property would be good for parking.
That could be, yeah. Of course, they'd have to cross that road, but that could be a crosswalk up there in a mark. Um, other than that, thank everyone, like Councilman Alvin said. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Councilman College?
Uh, yeah, just a couple items. Just for clarification on the consent agenda for the change order for the additional time, uh, if you didn't look at the agenda, uh, the reason for that extension is due to material delays, specifically air release valves, subductile iron spools, air release valve hatch covers, HDP adapters, and HDV pipe. So it's not for monetary amounts, just for a calendar day extension. Um, second item, uh, as far as the speed bumps that Councilman, uh, Alvin and Jackson have mentioned, I'm all favor putting the temporary speed bumps, uh, to see how, uh, the residents in that area respond to them. Like I said, uh, thought it was a great idea when we did it with the bridge project and it quickly turned into a, a bigger fiasco than a benefit. Uh, but I'm, I'm always willing to give it another shot and see, uh, other areas the city may be more appreciative towards them. Uh, third item, uh, the Men's Club Monte Girl Parade, uh, we do have some streetlights that are out on the very east side of Dolphin. We can try, I know they're a headache and trying to get them working. It looks like it's on a circuit. And if we could, we have those floodlights that are supposed to shine up around a fountain onto a sculpture, and that vegetation is growing up pretty good. If we can just cut out the vegetation around those floodlights to try to, you know, better, uh, make our sculpture and all that a little bit more visible, especially during the parade, uh, you know, that's a key feature to the city with the roundabout. It's great to show it off, especially at nighttime. But other than that, that's all the comments I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Gallot?
When y'all speak of speed bumps, what Clearwater has, you've just got these rubber strips that you put down.
Temporary raised.
The black rubber?
Yeah.
Got a raise at least four to six inches?
Like the college.
The college is permanent.
Yeah, but these are about the same size, but.
They're not, they're not as wide as.
They're three foot wide or more, five foot wide.
Well, they still are pretty high.
I'm all for them, but them strips that y'all put down, them lasted about a week in my neighborhood. They were all over the place. I went out there and pulled them up because they were going in people's yards.
Can you slow down?
No, wasn't me.
They just did it here, right?
You can't, you can't speed in Sea Cliff anymore with the.
Built-in speed bumps.
Streets.
Yeah, no, that's true. Councilman Gallot, that's set up to be addressed.
I was just concerned about what size, if you're going to put down speed bumps, how high are they going to be? I think they're, I know I was just on, uh, Pensacola Beach this morning, and they got some pretty good permanent speed bumps down through 98 down there on the beach side. You better be doing 20 and 25, or you're going to lose a front end.
These temporary ones, you better be going 5 miles an hour, else you're going to lose front end.
That's, I, because I remember the last meeting, I was at questioning about speed bumps. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Gallot, and welcome back to nature's playground. Councilman Jackson?
I'm a traveling man.
Yeah, um, since we're addressing, I'll be, I'll try to be brief, you know, the, there are other options of speed bump. We don't have to have, you know, one that's raised too high, but there are other options because I've seen many other options from different, going to different cities. Um, it's best we definitely do a test one, but at the same time, we need something that's permanent, uh, because the community is, you know, they, they're coming to me. They're saying, hey, we need something done. The children are at risk, as you see a child that hit. So, I mean, it's just a multitude of things that can happen, um, if we don't do something about it, you know, which is, um, I think it's just, you know, if they, if they got a lowrider car, they know to slow it down and it, you know, and go over the bump where it won't tap the bottom of the car. Um, what's something else I was going to address? Oh, yeah, I got the, um, Crime Stoppers, they want to put signs up on, on Baycott, on if we got the sign bar all the way, already up, certain, um, signs that we already got the sign bar up. I guess they add, want to add to it. So they want to do that if, uh, if that's possible to be done, and I was going.
Do they want to do it themselves or they want us to?
Well, they want us to do it because I, I, I don't know why they said they couldn't do it, but he was here just earlier in the, for the meeting.
Think you need to get those to.
That's, that's what I, that's what I told him.
I believe we spoke to them before. We were waiting for them to bring us the sign.
Right, they got some signs coming, so. But I, I did the same thing. I said, y'all, talk to Ms. Beal. Yeah. And I believe that's all I got. Everybody have a great day.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
Uh, this past week, uh, several of us went to Jackson for Mississippi Municipal League. Uh, if you don't know what that is, it's basically a little college for elected officials in the state of Mississippi to go prolong their education on how municipalities work and how they should work. Uh, we also take this time to meet with legislators to discuss projects that we're doing in Gochae, uh, to acquire funding and support, uh, from Jackson. And we had several meetings, and they were all positive meetings. Uh, we have a lot of projects that are already started, so I feel like that's going to give us the push to get what we need for the rest of it, um, along with new pool projects that April and Paula and everybody's working on that, um, some real exciting times coming up. But it was just a really, really good, positive time in Jackson. I'm real happy about it. I think that, uh, we have Adam, Casey, Gordon, and myself up there, and Paula, uh, and Josh, our attorney. So it was a good team. Um, other than that, I think these chairs could use some WD-40. Squeaking and rocking. Whoever, Scott, want to handle that?
Just a little distracting.
Squeaks with a bigger guy sitting there.
I know, I'm probably over the weight limit. Anyways, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman George. Um, you know, I echo what all of our councilmen are saying. It is, um, the speeding is out of control in residential areas. Um, but as we've heard from the residents and as we heard from Councilman Gallot, the, if you're going to speed, those rumble strips are not going to stop you because they, they don't care about their vehicle. Um, sort of like the three-inch ones, they're going to tear their vehicles up. They're not going to care if they're down or not. Um, however, I do want, with that being said, um, have we notified and checked with the insurance carrier to see how this is going to work when we have claims? Can we ask them so we have something in writing how the process works? I just want to, so when I get the first.
Put signage up like we did before, and you put the rumble strips or speed bumps down. It's on the person who runs over. That's all we have to do.
But I think we had a rumble strip that was up and not all the way down, right? And we had an insurance claim, if I remember. Or they called me and I told them to come file. Right. But, I mean, it's not that citizens filed that they hit the rumble strip that's half up and damaged their car. So I just want us to have it in place so when I get the first citizen complaint of a tire or a under.
I think the rumble strips are useless.
We know how they work.
Maybe, may I say something while you're talking about that? I think some stiff fines written by our police department, I mean, some stiff fines. If you're 10 miles over the speed limit in a little C street that's 20 miles an hour or above, stiff fines, I think, and, and could we advertise those people that speed?
Yeah, but try to catch them is the problem. It's in the, it's inside the neighborhood.
You're not going to catch everybody every day, but you can catch them in this area and catch them in that area. Stake areas out at different times, at different days. And I think after about 100 or so, and you advertise them, you know, and a stiff enough fine, I think people might get the message.
Well, I did think, um, Chief Bever does have a plan to use the motorcycles in residential areas to try to help with that, don't you, Chief Bever?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I think that is his plan, Councilman Anderson, to do that.
I think that'll wake some people.
That'll wake some people up when they get their two mile over speed limit in residential areas since we got so many complaints.
I disagree. They can speed and then they be hurt.
So I just want to, um, echo that, just to make sure we have a thing in place when we have the complaints coming in on the speed bumps damage. Um, also, I just want to thank our city manager, our city attorney, uh, for organizing and the staff who put together the MML legislative priorities for us to go to Jackson, um, and all the people who are, um, sponsored our dinner, our engineering firms, um, and our city attorney and our city manager. You know, we are very thankful for all of y'all, and we did do, and we were very successful in Jackson, I feel. And, um, coming home from there, having the support of our local delegation really feels good when you can sit down and talk to them and you really get their support on your projects means a lot. So, um, as we heard when we were there, we will be going back to Jackson, um, so they know we are alive in Gochae, Mississippi, and we definitely need our projects. So, um, thank all of you for that. Also, I want to, um, thank our police department and our fire department. Yesterday, um, we, if you did not see on social media or on the funeral home, um, website, we lost one of our former police officer, um, Mr. John Burks. I ask that you keep his wife, his two boys, his sister, his brother-in-law, nieces, um, in your prayers over the coming weeks. Um, but that was a very touching, um, service and also a procession from heritage all the way to Crestline. Um, it was led by, um, public safety and our fire department, um, got out on the highway to have condolences also. So I thank both departments for that, and it was noticed. Um, even our antique police car made social media. Hopefully that antique police car is on its last leg, Chief Bever, because it literally is, the paint's cracking and it looks rough. So I'll be glad when our backorder police cars get here.
Oh, people notice that, man. Say, hey, look at what we got, an antique.
We're the only one that had an antique, but it'll be gone soon. But Chief Bever, thank you for working to get those new, um, cars that you have in your budget. I know they'll be ever delighted to get them. Um.
We just show so we take care of our vehicles here.
That's true. That's true.
We utilize every bit of them.
Um, also, I just want to remind everybody about economic development. It's about, um, and thanks Sam, um, for all your positivity on our social media, um, getting everything out there in a positive way, fastly on the app. When I was in Jackson, I heard, um, other local cities saying, who does y'all's out? We're trying to get one like y'all. And Ms. Shancy was with me when we heard that from our other, um, cities across the state. So it's recognized what we're doing, and, um, that's kudos to all y'all for making that happen, um, to be able to hear the positive about our city when we're in Jackson. Um, also, our little pastry shop, I encourage you to continue to support them, but they are thriving down there. They've widened their, um, selection to even making cakes and king cakes, and, um, they are opened an extra day during the week. They were closed two days, but now they're opening again. Um, so go down there, continue to support all of our small businesses, um, because they are what keeps our city going. Um, all of our small restaurants, our boutiques, our local pharmacy, um, all of them, we're thankful and blessed here. We also have something else. Oh, Clearwater, did they, did Russell leave Ramona?
Yeah, she's right there.
Um, can we get the street sweeper? And I know, um, the rocks at every intersection and also the Singing River Bridge, um, West River, if we can just get the street sweeper on it and get it cleaned up. It's got loose gravel, loose stuff, and hopefully the grass overtake those rocks sooner than later. Um, but thank y'all for doing that. Also, thank, um, Waste Pro yesterday was a holiday for us, except for our public safety and our public works, and also, um, Waste Pro. Waste Pro was out working yesterday, so thank them. Um, and I will relay that to them. With that being said, I think that's all we have. With that being said, I think that's all we have. Remember to share our city Facebook post to get it out to everybody. The more shares, the more traction we get so the citizens know what's going on. Also, Chastity is still needing some volunteers.
For baseball.
For baseball and softball, so if you feel the need to volunteer for our youth in our community, I encourage you to do that. Mr. Stubbs, we hope you won your bowling tournament and welcome back home. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, Ms. College or Mr. College back there for coming. Thank all of our citizens for coming into the meeting and also thank the ones that are watching us on social media live so you can go out and share the positive story and not the rumors because we are alive and being very successful here in Goche. Also, if you got anybody interested in economic development, we do have some I-10 corridor properties listed for sale and I encourage you to reach out to our city manager. We do have some tax incentives. So, our I-10 corridor is available and on the market. So, come to Goche, you got some I-10 frontage out there. That's all I have. I'll let our city manager now, city attorney, Mr. Dennis. Our city judge, she don't have anything because she's doing a great job across the street. Does any directors have anything? Chief Leach? Chief Bever? Ms. Morton? Ms. Senate, you want to talk? Mayor's Youth Council is getting ready to go to Oxford, Mississippi for the Youth Leadership Summit and I know we'll have a great time in Oxford with our youth. So, we look forward to that. Okay. Do we have a motion to recess until January 17th, 20?
Oh, ain't right.
Oh, that ain't right. February the 7th at 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman George is second, by Councilman Jackson, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We're recessed.